Well, hello, everyone. I'm Colleen Feige. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Edina, and it's my pleasure to welcome you to our Edina City Council Candidate Forum. It's wonderful to see so many in attendance. And to those of you that are watching it on our website, we welcome you, and please encourage your friends to watch this, too, so they know more about which candidate they want to vote for in the election. And just so you know, the early voting starts on Friday, September 23rd. So that's two days away. And also, if you don't get voting beforehand, be sure you vote November 8th. It's very important. This is a very important election. Let me say a little bit about the League of Women Voters of Edina. We strive to make democracy work by promoting active and informed participation in government, increasing understanding of civic issues, and influencing public policy through education and advocacy. We're very proud to join other leagues in Minnesota and across the U.S. as a nonpartisan organization which neither supports nor opposes any candidate or political party at any level of the government. And but one thing we do do is we work hard all the time to grow, empower, and protect the vote. This is a very important year for that. So everyone be sure to get out there and vote. The League of Women Voters of Edina is fully committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion in principle and in practice. It's central to the League of Women Voter Edina's success in engaging all individuals, households, communities, and policymakers in creating a more perfect democracy. I think it's important for you to know that the League of Women Voters posts complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting purposes. Excerpts, excuse me, or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. If anyone says, you know, "We'd like to see what Joe Schmo said at the forum," you can just direct them to the Edina website, lwvedina.org, and they can watch it there. Anyone can access that website. So it's my pleasure to welcome tonight our moderator, Laura Helmer. She is a member of the League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County and the president of League of Women Voters, Minnesota. And also to welcome the candidates, Janet Katuie. I should get out of the way. Julie Risser, Ron Anderson, and Kate Agnew. I might be standing in front of them right now. But thank you very much, Laura, for being here, and candidates, for being here as well. Thank you.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for attending or viewing this candidate forum. The purpose of this evening's forum is to provide an opportunity to hear from the candidates for the Edina City Council. All candidates who filed with the Minnesota Secretary of State were invited to attend. One candidate announced earlier that he has suspended his campaign and is therefore not present. Many issues important to voters will be discussed tonight, and we will try to cover as many issues as possible in the time that we have. If your specific question does not get addressed tonight, please feel free to contact a candidate directly. I will now explain the rules and the format for tonight's forum. The candidates are asked to remain seated throughout the entire candidate forum. A candidate will have one minute to make an opening statement and up to two minutes to answer the question that was sent to them in advance by League of Women Voters, Edina. Candidates will then answer several questions submitted by the Edina community. The moderator will indicate if questions have either a one-minute or two-minute time limit for response. Finally, each candidate will have two minutes to make a closing statement. League volunteers will time the candidates' responses and indicate to them when they have 60 seconds and 45 seconds remaining for the two-minute questions, and for all questions, 30 seconds, 15 seconds remaining, and then when the candidate must stop. The moderator and League of Women Voters, Edina, determine which questions will be asked and attempt, in good faith, to cover the topics of interest indicated by the submitted questions. All written questions become the property of League of Women Voters, Edina. The city of Edina, our host site for this forum, decided in 2022 not to livestream the candidate forums on any of the city's online platforms. The city of Edina is, however, recording the forum and will provide an electronic copy to the League of Women Voters, Edina, at the end of the forum. The League of Women Voters, Edina, will put the recording in its entirety on their website the next day, and that is lwvedina.org. Now, I would like to introduce the candidates that are with us tonight: Kate Agnew, Ron Anderson, Janet Katuie, and Julie Risser. Each candidate will now have one minute to make opening remarks. And just a reminder to candidates, please speak directly into the microphone when you're speaking. We'll begin with Janet Katuie.
Good evening. Thank you, the League of Women Voters, for inviting us here to be able to speak on our platform and issues that are important to us. Once again, my name is Janet Katuie. I am running for Edina City Council. And I -- my platform constitutes of affordable housing, transportation as one of my issues, and representative and transparent governance. Those are the things I am running on. So I am asking as of Friday to -- for your vote. Thank you.
Julie Risser.
Thank you, League of Women Voters residents, for tuning in now and later. I'm Julie Risser. Like you, I care about Edina. My husband and I have lived here for 23 years. This is where we raised our children, and they are now successfully launched. Tonight, I ask for your vote. Serving on city council means listening to residents and representing community expectations. Our city code, zoning, and comprehensive plan are the basis for those expectations. They ensure all Edina is represented, oversized projects don't rise up by homes, and we, as a city, can move toward shared goals. I've served Edina as a dual commissioner, appointed to both planning and the Energy and Environment Commissions. I was a liaison, bringing energy and environmental lens to project review. As I doorknock, a top concern is overdevelopment. Many feel development is happening to them, not for them. On council, I will be the needed new voice that represents smart growth, deliberative process, expected standards. That is the job of city council. It's what residents deserve.
Ron Anderson.
Good evening. I'm Ron Anderson, a 34-year Edina resident. I've served both the city and school district in numerous capacities in that time as coach, president of athletic organizations, both on city and school district levels, sat on the board of real estate tax appeals and equalization, and most recently, on the city council. Our three daughters and their families all live here in Edina. We're lifers. Professionally, my career path has been in the housing and real estate sectors, including contracting, building, development, sales, management of brokerage operations, including mortgage and title. I'm certified as an instructor in pre-licence in continuing education. My background in senior housing development and management of affordable housing provides insight and experience which I've gained by listening. I'm standing for reelection, to continue as a voice for resident advocacy, to continue to bring forward common sense solutions to our complex challenges, and, most important, to help to make our town a better place to live. Thank you.
Kate Agnew.
Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight. I am Kate Agnew, and I'm running for Edina City Council. My husband and I moved to Edina to make it our home and to raise our family. We chose Edina because of the great community that it is. We now have our two daughters, all of an honor. And I want to represent our community to continue, make it be the amazing community that it is to raise our children and grandchildren. If elected, I intend to serve on the council by asking questions, being curious, applying critical thought, and learning from those who are experts. I will apply the same rigor that I have shown as the chair of the Planning Commission. I want to serve Edina in our city council because of the voice that I can offer of young families and to be ear to all. My vision for the future is simple. I want Edina to be a place that encourages community, inclusivity, and connection. I know that we are all better when we all work together.
Our first question was sent out to candidates by the League of Women Voters, Edina, in advance. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond. We'll start with Julie Risser. And the question is, what do you think are the most pressing issues facing the city of Edina?
Thank you. We must stop incentivizing oversized development. It erodes neighborhoods, neighborhood charm, and community trust. We're rewarding unneeded burdensome projects through rezoning, variances, and TIF. Too often, infrastructure can't support the added density, and roads get further congested. We have all experienced this. Good news: there's preventative action. Stop doing this. We must prioritize basic infrastructure. Edina has gone far too long with far too few fire stations. We must budget for a fire station in the northeast quadrant to lower emergency response time. Public safety is the foundation of community well-being. It must be a top priority. City actions need to support actual housing needs. Edina promotes luxury apartments. This housing already exceeds market demand. It reduces opportunity for missed, missing middle, and affordable housing. As new buildings go in, naturally occurring affordable homes can be threatened by supersized developments. Vibration, air pollutants, including particulate matter, emerge during construction. Climate change and water management, this is also so important. The flood mitigation project in the Morningside neighborhood reflects the power of taking a long-term vision. But other parts of the city are experiencing multiple projects that significantly expand the buildable area on sites. These areas are losing pervious surface, mature trees. They're moving in the wrong direction. Finally, solar access. Edina has won impressive awards, but championing buildings that are significantly taller than the properties surrounding them limits the current and future potential of solar energy generation. As energy costs rise, we can't have shadows cast over residential and governmental properties, as well as commercial properties. Buildings last a long time. We need to think long term. It's 2022. Solar access is a really big deal. Thank you.
Ron Anderson.
If time allowed, it'd be useful to examine issues as they relate to governance through its various functions and considerations, such as health and safety, budgeting, tax strategy, political lobbying and donations, as well as zoning and land use and development. Two minutes does not allow that. However, as a candidate, I often spend time walking through our Edina neighborhoods in order to better understand what's on people's minds. While questions come forward about many of the topics mentioned, what I hear most often are, number one, personal safety and crime. This is an ongoing topic in many conversations. What we notice today is caution in considering where we go and when we go there. Number two, pace and breadth of development with some additional comments by residents regarding the public financing of many projects. Number three, inevitably, those concerned with density issues speak to the potential of further traffic congestion, especially east of 100. Number four, there are questions asked often about status of public amenities, such as the Arts Center, a community center, as well as condition of parks and playgrounds, facilities such as Edinburgh Park, Courtney Fields, or Braymar Arena. I think it important to note that at some point in the majority of these conversations, a comment is made on the divided nature of our society. Clearly, this is not solely an Edina issue, but our experience is here. Traditionally, our civic strong points have been pride in our community, our children, and our great sense of volunteerism, participation. When we seek avenues to reach out, meet halfway, find common ground, we're able to find solutions. Our guiding principles are reestablished, and our differences are diminished. Pressing issues can be reconciled then for the betterment of our city. Thank you.
Kate Agnew. I think that the last two and a half years have been really tough. As a whole, there is a decrease in trust for the government, and I think that there's a greater division among people. I don't know how to change this on the national level, but I think that one way we can help it at the local level is by bringing people together over their common values. We all chose Edina because of everything that it has to offer. We've all chosen to make Edina our home. It is our responsibility to continue to make it the best that it can be. If elected to city council, I will look for opportunities to create more connectivity. To me, that means among residents, between the council and constituents, and as a nonpartisan position across party lines. At the heart of it, I instill in my daughters the importance of treating each other with care and compassion, especially with those who are different from us. I intend to lead the city in the same way. To build trust, I aim to lead with transparency. I think it's important to bring people along in the process and ensure a diverse set of voices are being heard. My time at the Humphrey School of Public Policy showed me that having a voice doesn't necessarily mean that your desires will be met. It means you are a part of the process and that you know your position was taken into consideration. I also think that now is the time for transformational change. To me, this means being proactive and making the changes now that will put us on a good path down the road. I started investing in my retirement account when I was 18, and I say that because it's important to act early and purposefully so that we can all reap the benefits for the years to come. At a city level, this really means purposefully addressing things that are right in front of us and setting the future for 40, 50, and 60 years down the road. Thank you.
Janet Katuie.
Thank you. What do you think are the important issues? I have run, and if any one of you is familiar with me, this is about my third time, and it is pure determination on the issue of affordable housing, both on the rental and homeownership options. That's one of the important issues I am still articulating for all these attempts I'm making to run. And it's purely because with a home, that is a foundation for many other issues, whether you are going to work, children going to school, stable community. It all comes back to a stable home. So one of the ideas I would like to run on and advance is make Come Home to Edina program a grant to first-time home buyers. It is targeted to the black and brown people, but the data is very dismal. When you look at it, it is -- it is not doing what it was intended. So it gets somebody in the door, but after that, it does leave. At the end of the day, we can't build wealth. My other issues are representative and transparent governance to low-growth policies that fully engage the community. I happen to be on the southeast quadrant of Edina. We are under-resourced in that section. So representation is personal to me. To be able to have park, as we discussed, community center, I see that section is under-resourced, and a community center would be so beneficial to many of us residents in that quadrant. Given a recent incident at the Y, I am now even more determined to advance a community center in our location.
Thank you.
And my other issue.
You all gave really comprehensive answers, but I know that the questions coming up will touch on a lot of those same topics again, so you'll have a chance to revisit them. I will now ask questions submitted by the general community to League of Women Voters, Edina, by email or here at the forum tonight. Candidates, you will have either one or two minutes to answer each question, and I'll announce how much time is allocated for each response before the question. So the first question will be a one-minute question, and we'll start with Janet Katuie. How can we improve public transit in Edina?
I do serve on our Transportation Commission here. I'm a commissioner there. And public transportation is in dire need in Edina. Just from the way it was originally laid out, crossing over to the west side of Edina on a public transit is quite impossible. So for me, shy of trying to really revamp our way of living right now, it is a monumental task. The buses around York Avenue, which was one of the busiest transited area, that has gone down, and some of it is COVID, some of it is lack of bus drivers. But also, more importantly, we missed out on an opportunity when we had the light rail go into Eden Prairie, and it didn't pass through Edina. So that is something we need to reconsider.
Julie Risser.
Thank you for the question, and I am a mass transit user. I ride the number six to get to the uptown area frequently, and I know that Edina has seen an incredible scale-back of bus service. When we first moved here, I could really walk one block, and I could pick up a rapid transit bus that would take me to downtown. I could hop on light rail. I could go wherever I needed to go. Then that stop closed, and that was a result of COVID and fewer people using mass transit. So I walked over to Wooddale and Valley View, and then that stop closed. And now, in order to get the bus, I need to hike all the way down to 62nd Street and -- or down 62nd Street to France Avenue. And I will tell you, crossing France Avenue at that point is a challenge. I will also tell you that I've reached out to Edina's Transportation Commission, or, excuse me, Department, and got a call back very quickly. They are really very responsive. So I had a conversation about this, and there are plans to improve the situation. Thank you.
Kate Agnew.
Thank you. I think the most important thing is going to be increasing the demand of transportation in order to get more transportation options. I know that there are often conversations with Metro Transit, and it often comes down to a chicken and an egg of, we're not going to increase the service or the number of bus stops until there is more demand for that. And so I think that we need to increase the demand. And one of the connected things to that, then, is increasing the walkability. We need to be able to walk to the bus stops and have, especially, I think, in the Southdale area, right, more walkable blocks so that there is that navigability. So those are the things, I think, that are most important. Thank you.
Ron Anderson.
Thank you. It's been touched on here. Similar ideas have been touched on. However, attracting metro transit into Edina is a big part of this. And that's actually part of the Southdale Design Guidelines, part of the Southdale Massing, has really been about attracting mass transit. It is -- it's more difficult, of course, to consider getting west of 100. That's going to be a long ways out. However, it can come into the east side. And again, the density in that area is probably what will drive that. Part of the challenge is that our neighborhoods don't really allow much in the way of turn radius. And so it has to be related to specific neighborhoods, and then they have to get to where it is. So if we use commuter lines to do that, that may be a possibility in the future. Thank you.
The next question, also a one-minute question, and we'll begin with Kate Agnew. Do you support zoning changes to increase the amount of affordable housing in Edina? Why or why not?
I think that affordable housing in Edina is one of the most important issues we have. I'm talking to people all the time that say their children were raised in Edina, but no longer can afford to move back to Edina. I also think it's really important that those who work in our community can afford to live in our community. And I think that we need to really be considerate of what are the levers that we can pull. Right now, as a part of the work that we're doing on the Planning Commission, we're looking at accessory dwelling units as a way to potentially incrementally increase density in a less transformational way. And I think that that -- I don't technically know if that counts as a zoning change, but I think that that's one really tactical way that we can increase the availability of affordable housing. Thank you.
Janet Katuie.
Yes. I do support -- the only way we can increase affordable housing, it definitely will have to look at zoning. If you go historically to the way zoning was done, it was intentionally designed to keep people like me out of community. And that is just the elephant in the room. Zoning would have to be addressed in order for affordable housing to be attained. Right now, when I'm at the Y and I run into Josh, who works at the Y and lives in the common bond communities, his quote directly is, Janet, they want us to work here, but they do not want us to leave amongst them in Edina. That was a profound statement from one of our constituencies. So we do need to honestly work on increasing that. If it's -- and this is affecting people such as our teachers, such as myself. Affordability is truly an issue. Thank you.
Julie Risser.
Thank you. I would need to have more information about what that would entail. High level, I think, what's happening and really compromising our ability to have the affordable housing that we need is a lack of respect for our zoning. We change it all the time. And we do that through the mechanism of planned urban development, but we're not respecting the zoning that exists. I think there are ways to go about it, including eliminating the buy -- the buyout option that developers have so that instead of paying and buying out, when they construct these large, multi-unit developments, they need to include affordable housing. I also believe that when affordable housing is wrapped up with TIF funding, that affordable housing has to last for the entire lifetime of the building. So I think there's many ways to increase our affordable housing. I'm not sure zoning is the way. I would need to learn more.
Ron Anderson.
Thank you. I think one thing to keep in mind is that almost every affordable housing project that has been built in Edina is based on rezoning. Very often, what happens is we'll have a zoning matter that comes before the Planning Commission, then the city council, where we're changing zoning to PUD or Planned Unit Development in order to gain density and to gain height. Our affordable housing policy allows for, say, 10% of units to be at a 50% AMI, or 50% of the area median income, which should be roughly a $45,000 to $50,000 income, or 20% at $60,000, roughly 60%. Okay. So we're not doing a great job of it. The Metropolitan Council's algorithm suggests that we should be 1,800 units by 2030. We have 340 approved during that timeline. So we can see that there is a big challenge, and rezoning has always been a piece of it. Thank you.
The next question, also for one minute. We'll go to Ron Anderson first. The Grandview Site, which is on the west side of Highway 100 behind Jerry's, has long been vacant since the Public Works Department left it. What plans do you have for its use?
Thank you. Well, actually, those plans are -- have already been cast. The Grandview Site has been at least 10 years in the making. There have been numerous proposals on that site. Today, we have a proposal for 90 units of a senior cooperative housing option, which would be an ownership unit for age-restricted, along with a restaurant, which also, with their outside space, would be used as a gathering place for the community. Additionally, there is a park, not a large park, but a park adjacent to that site. The truth is, is that that may be the best that we can do at this time. Many proposals have been considered, and they tend to be either too expensive or there isn't support for it. My personal opinion is it would have been a great place for a community center. I would have far preferred to see it. You have to finance these things, and that's part of it. Thank you.
Kate Agnew. For the Grandview Site and specifically the proposal that is under review right now, it is missing a core component that the comprehensive plan calls for, and that component is a community center. I know that there have been 10 or so different proposals considered for that site over the years, and because of financing, none of them have worked out. And while I do really like core components of the proposal that's there today, namely, the ownership of affordable housing, the restaurant that's going there, kind of a gathering location, I think that because of the plan that was set forward in the comprehensive plan, it's really important to, on one of the last few city-owned sites of that size, especially in Edina, that we commit and follow through on creating a community gathering location. Thank you.
Julie Risser.
Thank you. And we do have a lot of -- Thank you. And we do have a lot of interest in a community center on that land. I would like to put forward the reality that we are now looking at a sales tax referendum on the upcoming ballot. Community center financing could have been that referendum. So there are financing options. We do know that there are local municipalities that use that tool that the state provides in order to make community centers happen. I would like to say that one of my biggest disappointments is the lack of clarity regarding safe bike trails, wide enough sidewalks into that section of land. And when you look at the map that shows alternative transit systems in Edina, that is one where you see a lot of dots and a lot of different colors. And it really is a place where we need to improve bike safety. One of the reasons I'm running is we are not reviewing plans upfront early on to make sure the infrastructure we want is in place. Thank you.
Janet Katuie.
Yes. The Grandview location is actually a community asset. And it being a community asset, I believe that the community needs to have a greater input. And just like it has been mentioned already, I am definitely a proponent of a community center to host both the young and the old. And that just is an invaluable asset overall to a healthy community, for the elderly and the young to be able to share space. COVID has presented some very lonely challenges. Having a community center for gathering would be really one way to alleviate that loneliness, but also in earnest, address mental health issues because we are communing together. Thank you.
The next question will be a two-minute question, and it will go to Julie Risser first. Edina Arts Center closed during the pandemic and is now partially open with limited offerings of classes due to the substantial maintenance required at the building. The expenses to renovate the current building would be sizable. How would you propose addressing the needs of the art center to be able to provide a broader range of art activities popular with Edina residents?
Thank you for that question. When we talk about the art center, we need to move forward in a balanced way and one that uses resources wisely. I would first off meet with the Edina Arts and Culture Commission. I know that they have been studying this issue for quite some time. I would want to hear their ideas. I would recognize that our current art center is in a remote but beautiful setting. It needs repair. But do we want to maintain that? We need to have a dialogue. One of the things that is so powerful is for people to be able to take art lessons and classes and be out in an area where there is beautiful wilderness. There's talk of building a new art center at the fire station site that we just secured on 76th Street. That's another possibility. But as somebody who has taught art history and served as a museum director, I understand how important location and partnering is. I keep wondering, could there be a synergy if Edina found a way to partner with Southdale? Southdale is a national landmark. It is a gem. It was the first enclosed mall. Is there a way that we could bring those two assets, our interest in art and programming, and somehow combine those two? Thank you.
Janet Katuie.
The art center is definitely one of those community assets that can provide a lot. Personally, I'm not an art person, but I have come to appreciate it. I have a friend who has introduced me to it, and we kind of visit that, but haven't had a chance to go to the Edina one. So the current art center offers residents the opportunity to engage in our visual art production. It may not be in a convenient location, but it does serve a purpose. So in my opinion, it will need to be renovated or bring it up to code where we still can enjoy that for the few of us who still like that. There are others who would like to see theatrical productions at this, but that is a bigger endeavor. So for me, in my opinion, would like to just renovate what we have and bring it up to code and continue. Proximity to the Guthrie Theater offers us an outlet if someone wanted to enjoy more than what we are offering here. So we do have proximity to the Orchestra Hall, to the Guthrie Theater, and those are world-class theaters that can satisfy the need for those who are more interested in lavish, elaborate artistic place to visit. So thank you.
Kate Agnew. I recently met with members of the Arts and Culture Commission to talk about this topic in particular. I didn't, before that meeting, really know the state of the current art center. I think that, you know, what I have heard is that I don't know that renovation is simply going to be enough. I think that there are people in our community that would like to see a new dedicated art center. One, the site in and of itself, wanting to expand it to meet, have additional needs, whether it's theater or additional things. And really, the size of where it is today isn't going to meet those needs. So I would listen, right? I'd listen to where are the better locations within Edina? I would ask a lot of questions about how would we fund it? How would we finance it? Because those are going to be really important things. But knowing how important arts and culture is to our soul as a community, I think it's going to be really important to listen to people, understand what that needs to be. And if we as a community decide it's a priority that we have, then we need to make that decision and invest into it. And I just, I get really excited thinking about what it could be. So I look forward to continuing those conversations. Thank you.
Ron Anderson.
Thank you. You know, first thing, first things first, the Art and Culture Commission has done an incredible job over the last couple of years with the closing of the existing facility, although now it's open for some workshops. Done a great job in continuing to introduce arts and sponsor arts in our community. The existing structure is functionally obsolescent, and as a practical matter, it really can't be renovated. Now, you could take it down, and you could potentially build on that site. Then the question becomes, is that where you want the art center? Should you be going through a residential neighborhood to access it in that way? There's a demand and a need for a new art center in our town. I wrote a proposal three years ago to actually sell that site, bring the art center over into the existing senior center, move the senior center over to Grandview, and incorporate that into a new community center there. It was deemed infeasible at that time, so that didn't work. We're going to continue to search. This is a consistent conversation. It's a necessary item. We need to add that. I don't think that you can be the town that we want to be without having a good art center available. Thank you.
The next question is also a two-minute question, and we'll start with Kate Agnew. In December 2021, the city adopted its Climate Action Plan. The plan identified 14 quick wins for reducing operational and community-wide emissions by 45% by 2030. But currently, less than a third of those actions are in progress. What will you do in your term to bring about implementation of these actions?
Thank you. I love the Climate Action Plan and that we, as a city, and very particularly, right, the Energy and Environment Commission, put as much work into that document as they did. I'm not as familiar with those exact 14 items, so I don't have a plan in place. But I do know that the plan as a whole has a lot more than the 14. I think that there are nearly 200 different actions that the city of Edina could and should be taking. This last year, as we were preparing our work plan for 2023 as a part of the Planning Commission, we looked through a lot of those items to see which ones could be added to our work plan, and I know that other commissions did the same. So in order to really chip away and make progress at those 14 quick wins that were identified, city council, staff, and really everyone that's a part of helping push forward this plan, needs to prioritize it and understand what are the blockers preventing us from being able to move forward. So I think those would be some of my first questions of why haven't we made as much progress on this? What can we do to continue making progress? And again, just continue prioritizing it and investing into it where needed. Thank you.
Ron Anderson.
Thank you. The Climate Action Plan was approved some time ago. That plan actually includes 200 actions that can be taken in Edina to meet goals by 2030. The city's greenhouse gas emission goals target a reduction in city operations and community-wide emissions by 45% below the 2019 levels and achieve net zero emissions by 2050. That's the goal. It's an ambitious goal. And activation of that plan and how to do it is, will continue to be a challenge as it has been in the past. That zero emission goal by 2050 would be in alignment with the 2015 Global Paris Agreement. Addressed also are transportation, land use, waste and wastewater, buildings and energy, local food and agriculture, green space and trees, climate health and safety, and the climate economy. I think that the best approach, the direct answer to that question, the best approach is to continue with our Green Business Recognition Plan, the strict observation of the Efficient Buildings Ordinance and Sustainable Buildings Policy. All of these policies are designed to support preservation of natural resources and efficient use of energy. As we move to a point in the future where it's harder to have access to energy, conservation of those resources become very critical. Thank you.
Janet Katuie.
Yes, I did have the honor of serving on the Climate Action Group. And for us to meet our Climate Action Plan, definitely there's going to be a concerted effort to make revolutionary move. In my opinion, companies or retail in our communities such as Target, we could hold them accountable in their transportation with the big trucks that they bring. How are they tracking the transportation of those goods from China all the way across the ocean, all the way here? Can we hold them accountable where they are reducing that? That is one bold action to really meet our Climate Action Plan in terms of reducing dependence on fossil fuels. The other part I would like to see is reduction of chemicals for our homeowners, whether it is in our yard. How can we be environmentally friendly with those chemicals and still have a beautiful front or backyard? Policies or education on that aspect to encourage our constituency to be able to look long-term on leaving a much better earth for our children and grandchildren would be more perfect. Because what happens is those chemicals are run off from our lawns, and they end up in the water, and they are killing the fish as well. So that is the cycle we are trying to interrupt. So it will be more education and encouraging less use of chemicals, whether it is in the wintertime in the saltine of ice or fertilizing our lawns. Thank you.
Julie Risser.
Hello. For the 2002 Comprehensive Plan, I co-authored Chapter Eight, the Energy and Environment Chapter. And it was very discouraging to see that the concepts we worked so hard to put into the very Comprehensive Plan were not integrated into decision-making. When projects come before council, they're asking for something more than our zoning and our code allows. We need to make it crystal clear that we are going to be screening those projects to see that they are in alignment, they do not violate, they do not tread on the goals, the visions, the aims of the Climate Action Plan. One example recently happened, we, you know, when we look at tall buildings, for example, I'll make this general, there's this sense that if it's tall, there is a green aspect to it. And that's not necessarily the case. We need to, as is said in the Climate Action Plan and Chapter Eight in the 2008 Comprehensive Plan and the 2018 Comprehensive Plan, safeguard so that, you know, language that we are going to protect solar access. We need to make sure that developers who come to Edina understand that they cannot create buildings that are going to cast shadows that fall on residences. That's not okay. We need to protect that. That's just one example. We need to protect our tree canopy. We need to protect our pervious surface. We cannot have projects that are being approved to cover two and a half times the buildable area that is allowed. That's just not okay. We're building ourselves into situations that are going to be completely costly and hard to deal with. We need to take, we need to preserve, we need to take that route. And so basically, we need to take the Climate Action Plan and make sure that it is being implemented in the projects that we approve. Thank you.
All right. The next question is a one-minute question, and we'll start with Julie Risser. Residents spent hundreds of hours on small area plans and the Greater Southdale Plan and Design Guidelines, and the city spent thousands on those plans. It seems, however, those plans are not always followed. For example, when developers ask for variances and they're granted. Why or why not, why do you think the plan is or is not being followed? And do you support those plans?
I live in a neighborhood that is very close to the Greater Southdale area, and I think one of the problems, from my perspective, is that the Greater Southdale Area Design Guidelines are being applied to my neighborhood, and it's having really poor results. So I think we need to step back and we need to think about all of the ways that this particular plan, which is an appendix to the Comprehensive Plan, maybe is overused or underused. But it is certainly not being followed in a way that is lending itself to the, supporting the goals and the aims, the vision of our community. So that's a problem. When I look at the Greater Southdale Area Plan, I'm not seeing it being carried out in a way that is logical. It seems when there is a parcel of land that opens up, there's this tremendous desire to make it develop fully, that one tiny little spot, so that the vision has been attained. Thank you.
Ron Anderson.
Thank you. When we discuss small area plans, our zoning, our variances, anytime we discuss those. We have seen a pattern over many years of allowing those zoning guidelines to be violated. We do that routinely. Everybody in this room knows it, people watching this know that. Sometimes there's reasons that you might consider a variance. It needs to be based on hardship. That's the basis of adapting variances. In terms of the Southdale Guidelines, those, they aren't just that. The Southdale Design Guidelines are guidelines. And so what I can share with you is, is that very often in discussing projects as they come before, both on a Planning Commission basis and on a council basis, we apply those guidelines as best as is humanly possible. Sometimes there are variations on them. The height issue that we often find is the biggest battle that we will find in the Southdale District. Thank you.
Kate Agnew.
As a chair for the Cahill District Working Group, we're coming up with a district plan for that area. I love the process that we have for creating plans and getting residents' input and really identifying beforehand what an area should be or should become. On the Planning Commission, we use those documents as the guides for what should we be asking questions about, what should we be very critical about with certain developments. And so I think that those documents are essential and really an important part of the process that I will continue to look at, whether as Chair of the Planning Commission or as a city council member. I think that, you know, when we have variances, it's always a case-by-case basis, and it's hard to answer a question without a specific development in mind. But I do hold those plans near and dear. Thank you.
Janet Katuie.
Looking at the Southdale area, which is proximity to where I live and where most of this development is going, and variances from the zoning, I, it disturbs me, why do we have rules if we are not going to follow? So my position is, if we have guidelines or plans- or plans that have been put in place, we should limit ourselves to that, meaning we adhere to the plans and stick to it as according. The Southdale area is where the vast majority of Edina's high-density housing is happening. And it's not lost on me why it is. This section of Edina is actually in the Richfield School District. So it does happen to correlate that. Once it's out of Edina School District, then we don't have to adhere to rules or guidelines that have been set. So that kind of disturbs me.
Thank you. The next question is also a one-minute question, and we'll start with Janet Katuwi. What programs and/or services would you like to see implemented or changed for the youth of Edina?
Well, thank you for that question. That is a question that is dear and close to my heart. As I'm speaking to our southeast corridor of Edina, that is an under-resourced area. Just last week, we had an unfortunate event at YMCA. In my opinion, investing in our young and youth is the best investment we can do. So many of us in the community are afraid and feeling insecure about safety. If we bring a community center where we can have programmed programs for these youth, they will have very little time on their hands to engage in any behaviors that cause insecurity for all of us. And not only that, they are going to harness skills that will carry them into the future and be contributing citizens of our community. So a community center in a southeast quadrant for me is dear and close to my heart. In addition to that, we don't have a playground with play equipment, and we have quite a few little people in that section as well.
Thank you.
So those will be things I would be looking forward to advocate.
When I talk to people about all the services that we have here for children, children that are my children's age, there's a lot of excitement. There's so many things offered that you can probably literally sign your kids up for something every single night of the week. But there is one thing that I've heard, and that's been some confusion about, like, when is something offered from the school, or when is something offered from the park? And so I think that there's just an opportunity for greater collaboration and clarity for parents on where are things being offered and how do you access it? I also know that there are activities that tend to fill up rather quickly. So I would look to consider where could we potentially expand and invest more into those where there is a high demand. Thank you.
Julie Risser.
To answer this question, I really wish I could have time to talk to people who are on commissions and advisory boards, get their feedback. I would want to talk to the Human Rights Commission. I would want to talk to the parks. And I would want to find out where our programming is not as strong, where it could be improved. I know that with the Fred Richards Park, I've been looking there, and it's really almost a park that is divided, where you have a small section of the park along park lawn, and it really is not integrated with the rest of the acreage. And just thinking about kind of the unevenness there and youth programming, you know, making sure that there's fairness in terms of our resources across the board. There's other very exciting things we could be doing, national programs like bike buses to school, where you get a whole bunch of kids getting together and they're actually kind of forming this bike bus and moving along the streets. There's a lot of potential we could pursue, and we're not doing that.
Ron Anderson.
Thank you. Programs, programs flow, the ones that people seem to be the most interested in, programs tend to flow through our Park and Rec Department. Parks are really the most accessed and valued asset that we have in our city. I think that the, if anything, I think that sometimes people just don't understand what, there's so much coming through, that sometimes people have difficulty understanding that. As a matter of policy, in terms of how do you determine what they should be, the truth is, is that that's almost always done on a staff level. There are recommendations that will come, say, from Park and Rec Commission, Park Board, but they, I think that's a little indistinct. In terms of driving other programs that may have more social impact, that, again, falls into the commission level. Thank you.
The next question is a two-minute question, and we'll start with Kate Agnew. First, some background. City leaders have put forward a $64.6 million investment plan to complete a conversion of Fred Richards Park into a multifaceted park and to reinvest in Braemar Park. On November 8th, Edina voters will decide whether to approve a local half-percent sales tax to finance the first phase of this investment totaling $39.3 million. One ballot question asks about funding for Fred Richards Park, and a second ballot question asks about funding for Braemar Park and arena improvements and expansion. And now the question. Please tell us if you either favor or oppose the half-percent sales tax referendum and why. Include in your answer what you would recommend if one ballot question passes and the other fails.
Thank you so much. So Braemar and the Fred are used in our community by a lot of people who don't live in and pay taxes on a daily basis in Edina. So to me, it absolutely makes sense that we would implement this 0.5% sales tax increase to help everyone pay for it. I think that the estimate is that about 60% of this revenue will come from people who don't live in Edina. So the second part of that question, though, really was, what would we, what would we do if only one were approved? And honestly, this goes a little bit deeper into the technical specifications of the law that I'm not quite familiar with. I know that as a city, in order for this to be on our ballot, we had to have this approved by the legislature. I'm not sure about the fine print on that of if we didn't receive the funding for one, what we could do if we could, you know, peanut butter, spread it over the two and do half an investment, or if that just means we do the investment in the one that was selected, and then consider an investment down the road. And so in that situation, if that were to be the case, I would look to Scott Neal, I would look to my partners at the city level. One, to be an expert on what we would even have as an option at our disposal. And then, two, to really make a recommendation of what the best path forward would be. Thank you.
Ron Anderson.
Thank you. Local option sales taxes, point of discussion, almost every place that I, every place I go. That's basically five cents on a $10 purchase. That five cents on a $10 purchase would restore Fred Richards Park to natural habitat, provide walking and biking trails, create additional pickleball courts, and I recall that is 12. That cost would be about $17.7 million. The referendum includes $21.6 million at Braemar Park, mostly for Braemar Arena. And this is why. The arena has seen far better days. There's several feet of permafrost under the east rim. That's a foundation hazard. As that foundation shifts, that's going to be creating problems in the building itself. It's not ADA compliant. There's mold present, and much of the HVAC equipment is original. Front entry is inadequate and dangerous. It's important to note that that in itself, those repairs are $13.5 million. The city needs to take those actions regardless, regardless of whether the referendum passes or not. We have to fix that space. Hundreds of families and thousands of kids come through Braemar every year. I think that's important. We have to fix our house. The best bargain for Edina taxpayers is the local option sales tax, because the University of Minnesota studies show that 60% or more of the projected revenues come from outside of the city. Now, I referenced earlier that we're going to have to fix Braemar Arena. Now, that can be done. Under Edina law, we can simply bond that, do those repairs, but all cities run on tax revenues. Those tax revenues come from where? Well, they come from real estate taxes. I would like to avoid that occurring. That's why I'm a proponent, in order to fix our house to the local option sales tax. There is not necessarily a good option for Fred Richards, should that fail. Thank you.
Janet Katuwi.
From the little I have understood about the half-percent tax coming to restore these assets of the community, I am a proponent of it. My only major issue is the equity element on these facilities with the rest of us is huge and it's glaring. So given that, excuse me, I have issues at fully embracing that because it still leaves some of us behind, and it's going to be a huge investment that we can't take on anytime soon again if it passes. So being that it's not very inclusive for me, crossing over from the southeast quadrant onto Fred Richardson, I have no access to that. Got to cross two major streets, and if I have little ones, boy, I'm in trouble. So I do have concerns regarding that. But the voters are going to have to speak. And when I'm on the southeast quadrant, I still would like to have a park with playground for little people in that area. That's my issue. Thank you.
Julie Risser. Thank you. Sales tax is a powerful tool. It's one the Minnesota Legislature makes available to local governments. As I'm listening to residents, some are telling me that they are for it, some are against it. Some are planning to vote for only one of the park projects. The state of Minnesota wisely recognizes that there are multiple views that surround sales taxes, and this is reflected in the language that governs the sales tax and specifically limits spending related to imposing local sales taxes. Local governments are prohibited from spending money to advertise or otherwise spend money to promote passage of a referendum for imposing a local sales tax. They may host public forums on the issue, provide proponents and opponents, provided proponents and opponents are given equal time to speak. And that's Minnesota Statute 297A, .99 subdivision one, paragraph D. I bring it up because as a candidate sitting here tonight, vying for a position on Edina's city council, I would be a paid individual. And this is just scooting a little bit too close to the way the state of Minnesota is regarding sales tax referendum. I've seen presentations with city staff that appear to be very promotional for the sales tax. I want to say that this is an issue that has to do with process and fairness. You may strongly favor the sales tax. A lot of people do. But it's important to follow process. If that's not done, only giving voice to one side becomes the norm. And that will be the case when that sales tax that you like less, or maybe really don't like, ends up being put forward.
All right. There's one more question on the investment plan, because I believe there's one more piece to it. The remaining $25.3 million of the investment plan was not approved in the 2022 legislative session. In 2023, the city of Edina plans to ask the legislature to allow another half-percent sales tax referendum that would then be spent on the expansion of Braemar Arena. Please tell us whether you favor or oppose another half-percent sales tax to finance a $25.3 million expansion to Braemar Arena and why? And Ron Anderson, we'll start with you.
My understanding is that that's a continuation of the tax that's on the referendum. It's not a separate half-cent proposal. What would be done in that instance, should the city decide to proceed, is number one, to plug the gaps in the inflationary cost of expenses that are attached to both those parks. I think we can recognize that with an eight or 10% inflation rate, we're probably going to be in trouble here going forward. We don't know if the amount that has been agreed to is it. Second, is there going to be an expansion, another sheet of ice at Braemar? That's the significant piece in there. If so, then it would be, we know that there's a demand, and we know that that can pay for itself. So that would be the reason that you would approach that. That is a correct statement, that it did not come out of the legislature in that way. The bonding bill wasn't passed. We didn't see it. And so that, again, that inflationary cushion doesn't exist at this time. So we'll see how far we can go on it. But yes, I would be in favor of completing the work on both those parks in order to make that perfect. Yes.
Kate Agnew.
It's my understanding as well that it would be a tax that would be added on to the end and not additive. And I think that that distinction is important for me and probably important for a lot of other people. The other part, if we were to consider this again in, you know, 2023, is I would want to ask, again, this is going off of some of the discussion we were having earlier about the Grand View area or other things that we as a community want to prioritize, is just looking at, are these the only two options that we then have in the immediate future to leverage a local option sales tax? And if so, I think that a lot of invaluable research has gone into identifying these areas, and I definitely continue to support that investment. But I also want to look at where are there other areas that we could potentially leverage such a thing for? Because there are a lot of needs for community-centered locations. Even hearing the conversation earlier about a potential new art center, I think that there's just some really great ideas. And I don't fully understand right now the process for what gets selected, what can be presented as a part of this local option sales tax. So those would be some of the first questions that I would want to ask. And then I would want to listen to people in the community to really understand that we're investing as a city into the things that are most important to those in our community.
Julie Risser.
I agree. I think Commissioner Agnew brings up some really valuable points. And I was also thinking that it's really important when submitting an application to the state, from the very beginning upfront, looking and talking with residents in the community, meeting with the people who are really focused on launching those projects, like a new art center or a community center, and finding, or a new third fire station, or a water treatment plant. There are a whole host of things that local governments use that sales tax to obtain. And I think upfront, early on, we have to have a very robust and clear conversation about exactly what it is that we are prioritizing. And one of the things, as I was getting ready for this debate and really thinking high-level about stuff, is, you know, it really has to do with the basics and infrastructure and taking care of those needs. And when I was little, I'd used to go visit my grandma once a year down, and she really emphasized key ideas that were so important to her. And one of the things she sort of drilled into me and my sisters was, when your output exceeds your income, your upkeep will be your downfall. And I thought that was just absolutely wonderful. And I think we need to bring that kind of thinking to city council. And I think we need to bring that specifically to the sales referendum. So.
Janet Katuwi.
Yes. As I have expressed my sentiment, these assets are definitely valuable to our community, and we will need to restore them because they are here. My major concern is just the equity piece of it. I don't think it is a very inclusive part, and all of us are going to be contributing to these sales tax, whether we are here already or coming from outside of the city and spending money at Southdale Mall or at Carb Foods. That's where the money will be collected. But it's definitely lacking in terms of inclusion for me, whether it's at Braemar or Fred Richardson. So in my opinion, I think you would need to, wishful thinking, I would say, if it fails, I would be happy because it gives me an opportunity to have an input on how that vision looks like long-term. Thank you.
All right. I've got two more one-minute questions for you, and then we'll have our closing statements. And the first one will go to Julie Risser first. As a city council member, how will you work with and utilize the views and recommendations of your city commissions, like the planning or the parks and rec, et cetera?
Thank you, and I love that question. Thank you, and I love that question. And I am very concerned that we are not integrating the concepts and the ideas of commissions and advisory boards to the extent that we really should. And we're losing a lot of information. We're not using our resources wisely. And, you know, it was so frustrating to write that chapter and to see so many of the ideas get dropped. And so I would be reaching out regularly to people who are on those entities, and specifically when plans came up, you know, looking at parks in the master plan. We need to be talking to the Human Rights Commission. We need to be talking to transportation. We need to be talking to energy and environment. If we're really going to do the best for our city, we can't just have these pools of talent move forward, and there's staff support for that, and then just kind of not integrate it and use it to the best of our ability. So thank you. I love that question. Janet Katuie.
Thank you. I equally like that question so much because I have been serving on Transportation Commission, on our Housing Task Force. But just on serving those commissions, I'm seeing that it is critical if the city council, if I get elected and I'm on city council and I'm appointing you or, you know, interviewing you and recommending you should serve, I'm definitely wanting to incorporate your ideas that come from that commission. I don't believe that many, most of our suggestions are always adapted, but then also the commissions need to a little bit collaboration. For instance, when it comes to the transportation part, our commission and the planning commission could integrate those plans because we seem to be really like, should talk to each other to implement something like mass transit in our community. We need to be able to talk to each other, but we are kind of operating in silos and makes it a little challenging and disappointing. But yeah, the value that comes out of that should be considered by council very strongly because that's community representation.
Thank you. Kate Agnew.
I love all of the work that our commissions do, and I think it's invaluable to our community. This last year, I think we had like almost 90 people that applied to be on boards and commissions, and the number of people that want to be involved in Edina is outstanding. I know of a lot of other cities that are jealous of that. But I think it is really important to look to empower the commissions. I, on the planning commission, do feel really empowered, and I do value that, and encouraging working together. This upcoming year, as a part of our work plan, we have a proposal that includes collaborating with both the Transportation Commission as well as the Energy and Environment Commission. And that's exactly the type of collaboration that we should be encouraging, and then taking the output from that and making sure that as a city council, we're listening to those recommendations and following through on it. So in all, love the work of all the commissioners.
Ron Anderson.
Thank you. Boards and commission are vital to the city itself, and as Commissioner Agnew mentions, there's an extensive interview process that goes to selecting people. And to the best of the ability of the council, each one of the action plans, work plans that the various commissions and boards come forward with are listened to very carefully. Those occur often throughout the year in work sessions. And so they do serve an important function. A really good working example of that would be the EEC, the Environment and Energy Commission. The Climate Action Plan is a direct result of their work, and that took years for them to put that together. It was passed and it's being implemented. So I think that's a good working example, and there are numerous. Historic Preservation Commission is working very hard to continue to maintain the historic areas that we have in our city. We work with them closely to do that. Thank you.
Our last question, and we'll start with Janet Katuie. How do you plan to work productively with those who do not share your opinions?
As a city council member, it definitely will involve collaboration and negotiating. For things that are important to the community, I would have to focus on the long term. What is it that I can compromise at this moment for the bigger picture, for the long-term health of our community? That is definitely going to be the driving force to find a middle ground. But then there are certain things that are just, will be difficult to negotiate, but I will always endeavor to work through and listen to the community. Of course, the community is the one that will be driving my decision, and if that's what they're asking, I am going to be responsive and be, hold their values that they're asking me to represent. It's not going to be mine. I need to be able to represent my constituency. Thank you.
Kate Agnew.
I often think of differences as like a Venn diagram, right? So you've got the two circles, and in one side are all of our common values that we share. What are the things that are important to us as a city of Edina, right? We love our schools. We love our services and our amenities. And that, to me, is like the bigger side of the circle. And then there's the other side of the circle of where are the things that we disagree on? And I think that by rooting in and remembering those commonalities, it makes it a lot easier to come to the table and share differing opinions, knowing that the person on the other side of the table or next to you at the table has some common belief. I was recently reminded of this in an interaction, which I won't get into in 15 seconds, but I really think it's about rooting in those commonalities and then finding a way to compromise and work together.
Ron Anderson.
Thank you. That's a good question. And it's good because very often I find myself not necessarily agreeing with my colleagues on certain matters as it relates to development or public funding for certain developments. And what I have found is, is that if there is an atmosphere of mutual respect, if there is an atmosphere of professionalism, if there is an atmosphere of learning from one another, finding areas that we do agree that we can get quite a lot of work done, votes shouldn't be unanimous. People shouldn't be going, you shouldn't see unanimous votes on every single issue that comes forward. If you know how the vote will come out, then there wasn't a good reason to have it, was there? So I think that's really, really important, that we have a good common ground, that we respect one another, that we work together as best we can for the betterment of the city. And this council particularly has been able to do that. Thank you.
Julie Risser. Thank you. I think Councilmember Anderson raises some really good points. Respect is a key part of that, and also we don't always have to agree, and we're not always going to agree. When that happens, if there is something that I can take that is part of an idea or a concept, and I might not agree with the whole, but there might be a little nugget in there that I can take and I can use and, you know, maybe work with that for another idea or concept or goal. So, you know, I think we get really wrapped up and we see things in a very binary way, and, you know, things are either right or wrong, and we need to really kind of pick things apart a little bit more and see if there's a little jewel inside something that we initially go, ew, at. And, you know, I think there's value to doing that. Thank you.
Now each candidate is invited to make their two-minute closing statement, and we will begin with Kate Agnew.
Thank you so much. We don't know what the next four years will entail. I think that the last three years and the curveballs that we have all been thrown has shown us that. What I will do is listen. If I'm elected to the city council, I will listen to members of our community. I will ask questions. I will really seek to bring voices together at the table so that we can make the best decision for what Edina collectively needs. I think it's really interesting to see where a lot of the questions today fell, right? There's a lot about what are we investing in as a community? I think that the where and the when and the what of what we're investing in needs to be discussed and decided on collectively, and I think that those things are so important. We also talked a lot about the Climate Action Plan, which I'm really excited that that came up as many times as it did, because it is essential to me and to the future generations of our community that we're conscious of that and that we're making the investments that we need to now to prepare and protect our city and our community and our health for the years to come. So, you know, what my upbringing taught me is to really listen to others openly and with compassion, and if I'm elected to the city council, that is what I am committing to do. Please vote for me this November, and please reach out. I'll be at the back table afterwards or reach out online if there's anything that you want to continue to discuss after tonight. Thank you.
Ron Anderson.
Thank you. In closing, I'd like to thank the Women's League for the opportunity to participate this evening, and to thank my fellow candidates for their time, as well as those in attendance here, remotely and online. Cities and neighborhoods exist in the here and now. We can't live in the past, but we can plan for a bright future, a future of our own creation, while understanding that quality of life is perceived at ground level, in the present, today. The guiding principles of my reelection effort are straightforward. One, inclusivity and equality are inherent in every decision made. Two, budget constraint is imperative in an inflationary economy. Three, variances in construction exceptions must be contingent on demonstrated hardship. Four, we must observe our zoning and design guidelines as well as small area plans. Last, it's critical to anticipate traffic congestion in any developing area or node. Increased congestion must be considered. Edina's leadership faces a significant challenge in that the demand for affordable housing must be met without sacrificing Edina's charm and neighborhood spirit. The often competing virtues of safety, livability, inclusivity, and sustainability can be reconciled, but only through careful planning and consideration of all community perspectives. For that to occur, we must work with the development community, but posit that development must pay for itself. We must require great design and work toward proper allocation of resources. To that end, I will continue as a staunch advocate for reason, responsibility, and transparency at City Hall. I'm Ron Anderson. Thanks again.
Julie Risser. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for organizing this forum. Thank you, residents, for tuning in. Thank you, fellow candidates. We're on a journey. When you go to the polls, please vote for me. I'm Julie Risser. I'm running to represent Edina residents and bring their concerns to city council decisions. We need smart growth that's deliberative, healthy, and expected. Development that happens for us, not to us. On city council, I'll be a new and needed voice. Residents want to be heard, and I value their insight. I'm gaining greater insight on the campaign trail as I door knock and I learn more about Edina's strengths and the areas that need improvement. We need a new voice, a new direction to fairly and effectively minimize risk, build trust, and ensure wise use of taxpayer dollars. I will lead with stewardship and respect to support livable neighborhoods, not an overbuilt city. Resident Voices zoning code and comprehensive plan will inform my decision-making. Please visit my website, JulieForEdina, and it's the number four, julieforEdina.com. Reach out if you have any questions or you want further clarification on any of the issues covered here or not covered here tonight. Thank you so much for your time. Janet Katuie.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, and thank you to my fellow candidates. I am going to end my forum today by quoting Shirley Cheesim. Shirley Cheesim was the first Black woman to run for Congress and was the first elected to run on a major platform in 1972 as president. And she spoke often about the opportunities that she and other marginalized people weren't able to access because they looked different than the norm. Today, we celebrate Shirley Cheesim and continue her fight for representation and equality. And on that, I am asking that you vote for me. If we care about our community, representation is important. I will bring a fresh voice to the council in terms of my background and just, the voice and lived experience will inform the decisions that are going to be made here. And those decisions don't just affect now, they are going to have a far-reaching into the future, and that's why I'm asking for your vote today. And the issues I care for are help the city with the affordable housing, both on a rental and homeownership option. Representative and good transparent government, low-growth policies that fully engage the community, strong environmental policies and reduce our carbon footprint, transportation options and connections for pedestrians and bicyclists. Those are the issues I care about, and I hope that you will vote for me starting this Friday. Janet Katuie, thank you.
Thank you to all of the candidates for participating in this forum and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for public office. Thank you to the League of Women Voters Edina for sponsoring this forum. Thank you to the city of Edina for recording the forum and for providing it to the League of Women Voters Edina. As a reminder, it will be available to all for viewing on the League of Women Voters Edina's website, lwvedina.org. And thank you for attending tonight's forum. Please remember to vote by 8:00 PM Tuesday, November 8th. Early voting starts this Friday, September 23rd, at Edina City Hall. This concludes the forum for the Edina City Council.